Good afternoon, everybody. I am here, Catherine Harrington. Our chair is excused. And I am with our Jason Snyder, Commissioner Napisa Phi, and Commissioner Jerry Willie. So today is Tuesday, maybe I should just say January 24th for assistance. Today is Tuesday, June 24th. We have got a very full day and a full evening. I think we should start with our board and leadership communication and the formal, formal agenda identification topic. As we start there, I, maybe I'll change my mind here. I think, I don't, I'm worried about forgetting the draft letter of support. So why don't we start with that? Get that out of the way. Is there any discussion on the draft letter of support for TB Highway Federal Grant? Give you all thumbs up. Everybody okay? Okay. Erin, that's done. So before we jump into board and leadership communication, I think it's really important, especially for this evening, that we talk about the agenda, the formal agenda, and how we're going to proceed. We have before us the opportunity to make a statement. I think all of you have read the statement, have seen the statement. We need to decide how we're going to do that. I'd also like to tell you all that we have ten or twenty people, twenty-one now, twenty-one people that have signed up for public comment in the two-minute timeframe. So it's my recommendation, and I'd like to talk about this with all of you, that considering the topic that is at hand, that we consider moving to thirty minutes for public comment and limiting each public comment to a minute and a half, but staying at twenty-one. And entertain comments here. I'm concerned that, again, I'll reiterate that this is an emotional topic. I really want to hear what the public has to say, and I'm concerned about cutting people off. I also believe that we should start with the statement that we've talked about before public comment, so that if people feel more comfortable, they may not choose to make public. So your thoughts?
I think, I can chime in here. I appreciate what you said about like making sure people are not cut off and that we hear or not. And I appreciate you being flexible to amend the time to thirty minutes. I'm wondering if we're going to allow thirty minutes. Should we just say forty minutes and give the twenty people there two minutes and just extend it ten more minutes?
That was going to be my suggestion, just because I made a statement probably a week ago, that saying anything meaningful in under two minutes is hard to convey. So I, you know, I think I would not take more than twenty-one, and I would give them no more than two minutes each. And then that would also mean we're not going to take five-minute, five-minute testimony at the end. At least that's what I would propose.
Well, we, we do have two people that have signed up for, three people that have signed up for five minutes at the end.
And you can't, you can't eliminate that at the end anyway. I mean, I think we did that last time. I don't think it was.
I don't think we eliminated. We allowed the person to go.
But we did not.
But I guess what I would suggest we do is limit it to the three that have already signed up at the five minutes.
Okay.
And that then gets you to your time.
Yeah.
I'd rather, although I wonder though, maybe we can have a bit more discussion. Community members who plan to come to this meeting, because this is an evening meeting. And, and I think are, I know some people who plan, because they can't come to the morning sessions. They plan on coming to that one evening. So I wonder, Commissioner Snyder, if you're flexible to be amenable to if community members come join in the meeting in person, and they raise their hand when Clerk Moss does his process of saying, will anybody in the room want to testify? I think we should allow some flexibility to those community members that took the time to come. I don't know. Thoughts?
Well, I guess. I would like to encourage them to consolidate, because I can't imagine we're going to hear twenty-one different messages. And so we could ask them upfront if their S E gene has been communicated generally from by somebody else to give up their time, and so we can move on, because we're asking, we're going to be well over sixty minutes. And just listening to what I believe to be the common message.
I, I understand what you're saying. I haven't seen much success when we do that. So I'm just, just saying that that doesn't usually hurt people. Although, in this situation, I think we may be coming forward if we move our, our, our comments to the very front of the meeting. There may be people that will not feel the same need to. It'll be new information to them. So we'll see. So where, it sounds like, Commissioner Phi, did you want to move to, how many people? Did you have a limit on how many people at five minutes?
No, I was just making a friendly amendment to Commissioner Snyder's suggestion. I, I think what's published is thirty minutes right now. So.
For the five-minute time.
For the five-minute time period. But I also hear Commissioner Willie saying, maybe you make as the vice chair, you make a statement saying if you have the same messages.
Oh, I will.
But yeah, I think I'm, I'm comfortable.
I think we're, what I'm hearing, Ms. Warren, agreeing that twenty-one people that are signed up get two minutes. The three people that are signed up at the end get the five minutes, and we're asking for consolidation. Is that what I was hearing?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, so our, our last, our last session will go fifteen minutes then max.
No.
See, I didn't think that that's what you were saying.
Oh, okay.
I mean, room for if somebody says, hey, I'm here in the room and I want to testify. To those three people.
So are you saying thirty minutes max, or are you saying unlimited?
No, I think, I think we stick to what's published, thirty minutes.
Okay.
At the most.
At the most.
I don't, I don't love that, but I can live with it.
Clerk Moss, are we on board here?
I believe so, Madam Vice Chair. So what I'm hearing, we take the twenty-one that have signed up, no more signups. So we're going maximum forty-two minutes at the beginning, and then no more than thirty minutes at the end of the meeting.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Now, if we could move on to the next piece, which is a discussion about the statement. Do you all have the statement in front of you? Okay. So there's been, there's been discussion about how, how to handle this. And I, as I look at it, my, my preferred method would be if we all share in presenting this. We all take a piece of it. My second position would be if the vice chair do it. I think it has to come from the board. So that's, that's why, that's why I'm putting it into that context. But I, I feel pretty strongly that this is what we want to be doing. This is the direction we want to go, and I think that we want to send that message to our public.
In solidarity.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I also think reading a document like that by four different people does not keep a flow and may make it harder for people to track, but I understand the objective.
Tanya has a.
Tanya, sorry. For members of the public that are viewing online or in the audience, I would suggest either a board member read this and all filed right now, or I can read the statement, I think, out loud, just for, for the benefit of knowing what we're discussing.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we, I shared with this, I'm comfortable if county administrator reads this statement.
At the board meeting?
Right now, and, and then also at the, when we get to that session. I think this is public information in our inbox. Obviously, this is an endeavor that's going to be undertaken by the county administrator office. I'm comfortable, one, if we all take turns to read this. And then second option for me is to have the county administrator. And the other option is, since I think majority of you were in support of rescinding, I could read the statements as well.
Well, I think, first of all, I think what I heard Commissioner Phi say is, yes, you should probably read this statement right now.
Okay, so I am only.
And we'll go back to discussing.
We can discuss how you want to handle this at the board meeting. For now, just for members of the public, I will read the statement on your behalf. This is a board statement. Quote, "We want to take a moment to address the community's concerns with the agenda item that was pulled from July seventeen, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners Agenda, Item G three. The purpose of the agenda item being considered was to meet new conditions included in federal grants and contracts. One aspect of that item was rescission of the county's equity resolution. We want to be clear. We will not be rescinding, revising, or amending this resolution. Let us share our priorities and process that we will be undertaking. The county administrator has retained a consultant to help the board, county staff, and community develop a path forward, including a resolution and order that honors our value of inclusion, reaffirms the county's commitment to advancing policies and programs in a lawful and non-discriminatory fashion. This effort builds upon the work that we have been collectively doing together to create a county and community that aims to be inclusive for all. Until we have this in place, we have paused the signing of all federal grants and contracts. The county relies on one hundred and thirty-five million annually in funding from the federal government to serve our most vulnerable communities. We anticipate bringing the proposed resolution and order forward to the Board of Commissioners meeting on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. We want to thank our community and partners for weighing in on this important matter and reminding all of us of the importance this work plays for all of us. In the weeks ahead, we will provide more updates on this process," end quote.
Thank you. Thank you for offering to do that too. So for the board meeting, I believe I did hear, I heard from Commissioner Snyder and from Commissioner Phi that she's both comfortable with, with each of us reading a part of this. And then I did not hear from you. Okay, we're okay then. Okay. So I would propose that the vice chair start, and then we go by district number through. Is that comfortable for everybody here?
Comfortable.
Great.
So, so please Commissioner Phi, me, and then Commissioner Willie.
Yes, and I would encourage, when I say this, I'm really talking to myself, that we, that we read slowly and clearly, because it's important that we get the message out there for, for everybody. So, and I know we're all practiced in that, but I just wanted to remind us.
To make this super clear, can maybe one of the staff assistants between now and then cut up the stuff so it's clear who's reading which things? Thank you.
Right, may, may I offer a friendly amendment to that? I wonder if we, just like we did here in this work session, we toss the mic to, to county administrator to do the reading as well.
Well, I think this has to come from the board.
It's our statement.
Yeah. Long message, I think.
So you're differentiating this work session space versus the dais?
And Tanya read it, just to read it on the record for those online. We're going to read it into the record of the board tonight in that formal presentation.
Right now, it was for context, so people knew what we were discussing.
I think, yeah, I hear you. You know, I think this is, and I would just be full transparent and just honorable a bit and say, it sounds a bit performative if we do that way, but if we say, Tanya, tell us where to journey, we're toss the mic. I think it's a bit more authentic, even though this is a board statement, and I hope this is published already in the, in the materials.
So this is, so I think, I'm going to answer my question first, Commissioner Phi, this is not in the materials, because we needed to come into this for the board's sake. Yep, we're still comfortable, thumbs up. Clerk Moss is actually ready to publish this into the packet, both during the work session, so it's reflected under leadership. And then it will also be reflected under this item in your board meeting, too.
So I, I think we heard from both Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Snyder. I'm comfortable with the board doing it, so if we're, if we're okay.
I'll go, I'll go along to be along.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. Appreciate it. All right, let's start with board leadership.
Not yet.
Oh.
Not so fast. So we do have one item that we would ask that during the meeting, you amend your rules to add an item to consent calendar. We apologize. We just actually received this. This is our I G A with the state of Oregon to transfer the Child Support Enforcement Services as a service from the county to the state. The state does need this in place prior to your next board meeting. So staff will work on getting this added to the packet, but you will need to make an amendment, and Vice Chair will get you the actual language, and, and board member staff are working on this real time and, and quickly.
So we're just going to make a, one of us is going to make a motion to add this to the consent.
Yep, yes, to amend your rules.
Suspend a rule to allow that to happen. Is that the issue?
So how the mayor's, former mayor jumped in on procedure.
I agree. So, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable.
And I think it's important that we make sure that we get this done, so that we can move forward with the work that has to be done.
I will just note for members of the public, this is an action that your board has considered through budget process this year. There are, from a staff perspective, no surprises in the I G A. It's, it's a transfer of service from one governmental entity to another, which needs to be documented and processed. Completely understandable from the state perspective, if they're assuming this service. You want to make sure that we have all the paperwork in place by the date. So just thank you, board, for the short notice and accommodating this in your agenda tonight.
Can I ask just one question to that? There was nineteen people, I believe, we had employed, and after the state employed all nineteen.
So one clarification, there were three attorneys, which the attorneys have been transferred into other positions within the District Attorney's Office. There were sixteen Child Support Enforcement staff. Those sixteen staff were offered positions with the state. All but one employee chose that route. The other employee is going to enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work in getting this done as well. And it's also my understanding that we got this information from the state very late as well. So I just want to say that as well.
As in today.
So another.
Real time.
Not our staff. Now we.
Let's go, Rick.
I'm getting, wait a minute, just a minute. We've got it, we've got a conference going on here.
We're fine.
So happy.
You're seeing real-time problems happening on Washington County.
We've heard nothing.
If any.
Whisper so quietly.
If anything changes, we will let you know. We just need to make sure all the paperwork is in place and everything is dotted correctly. So if anything changes, we'll update you.
Thank you for your attendance to this. So we'll start with leadership comments. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. We'll start with Rick.
All right, great. Good afternoon, C D U S Board of Directors. I have a handful of announcements to make today. I'll start off in reporting that we had our all-leaders meeting last week. That includes all of the supervisors and managers at Clean Water Services. Major part of our organization was present. I want to give many thanks to the chair and the vice chair, who showed up and attended, made some great remarks. And I think the staff really benefited from the open question and answer session. Much appreciated. I heard comments, many second-hand, some firsthand, that they thought this was the best all-leaders that we've had in a, in a long time. So that was off to a good start with that meeting. I did also announce at that meeting that we will be changing from SAGE, which is the Strategic Advisory Group, to the executive, to the simpler executive leadership team. And we're taking a fresh look at that structure with the goals of improving efficiency and sort of direct lines of communication throughout the organization.
Good, because I could never remember what SAGE did.
Yeah, it puts too much pressure on me to have this SAGE thing as well, so.
Isn't also the company I used to occupy the news.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to make it extra.
I forgot about that.
Speaking of leadership changes, Jack Lang, our Chief Business Operations Officer, let me know that he is resigning effective July second. He's been with us since 2021, and we wish him the very best in his new endeavors. I will just state that I'm not intending to refill Jack's position. I think this is a good opportunity to work with the E L T and the directed staff to find ways to really streamline that group as well and, and have some great options, like we'll bring forward for how to reorganize without needing to refill that position. On quick, as part of Resolution and Order twenty-five dash five, we've been conducting our expedited domicile review. Got some results back, and I want to share, just to get you all up to speed, Arizona is looking to be the top slot at this point in time. Hawaii is second, so I'm moving forward with the team to the next phase, which understand the cost and timing of making that type of move. That's the next critical piece for us to really develop a plan and a recommendation. We'll have that information by July fifteenth.
Are you, can I?
Yes.
Please, please.
No. Discussions. Great. Thank you for your updates. I have a quick question. While you're doing the domicile review, I remember there were conversations about if the state of Oregon could potentially be. Are you looking into that as well?
Unfortunately, at this time, they are not a viable option for us, but we certainly will keep track of Oregon.
Do you articulate why Oregon isn't a viable option? I mean, we've had discussions, but for the public viewing.
Commissioner Phi, I, I had the opportunity to talk to Rick yesterday, and my understanding is we're going to get a presentation with all the criteria that will explain why Oregon, as well as other states, were not at the top of the list. Is that, does that address?
Yeah, that's good. I mean.
And that's on the.
Appreciate it if you included that in your updates, Rick, to be fair and transparent, but yeah. Do you know with the timeline of when that presentation will happen then?
It will happen in July. Yeah, I can't. July eighteenth. Yeah, but I'm happy to share those materials. It has to do with needing to own stock is one of the reasons that Oregon is not viable, through my understanding.
I think we just have to be super clear to why Oregon isn't a viable option. I think that generated a lot of questions, and, and most of them aren't criticism questions. They were more like curiosity questions. I think the board knows, and I think we've been convinced, and prior board has been convinced, why outside Oregon is a viable option. But what's happening, I think it's your leadership. They'll, they'll be, they'll go, they'll go along his way if we articulate that.
The group that came to, you know, do the education session were pretty clear that the short version of this is because the state of Oregon's insurance regulatory agency has literally no experience doing this. That was their short answer. That is not something that you want to be first in on.
They didn't even make the list of the top fifty, is that, top thirty, maybe even make the list, and so.
Just, yeah, at this point. But that said, when we present, we will make sure that there is a specific slide on Oregon and, and why that is not making the list at this point. It could change over time. When this first started, Arizona was not highly ranked. They got a lot of experience, and now they are looking very attractive, so hopefully Oregon is able to.
I also agree with Commissioner Phi from the standpoint that, as Oregonians, you wonder why your state isn't there. So that, and that's, I think, the message, so. And a clear explanation will be great. Thank you. Ms. Angie.
I'm, need to read my notes from my phone, because my computer decided to do updates, and now I can't access the files I need, so, real time. And I take pride in my memory, but not all the time. So really proud to announce that we have completed our internet transition. If you were in the building last week, on Friday, you may have had challenges getting online.
I don't need in the building, but.
At home, too.
At home, yeah.
Well, I apologize for that interruption. However, this is about making us more internet independent here at the county. I previously have briefed your board of service interruptions that we were receiving with how our internet was delivered. Service interruptions in a twenty-four-seven system are really problematic. And so our I T team has been on this path for actually several years. And this is transitioning our interdependence from the broadband user group known as BUG, which is a multi-governmental partnership, marking the end of over a year of technical planning and nearly a decade of effort working with our partners for a smooth transition out of BUG. This milestone reflects the resilience, creativity, and dedication of our I T F staff, led by our I T director, Luke Ross, who worked tirelessly, including through the night, to manage everything from infrastructure planning to the complex system cutover. Well, of course, a few bugs emerged, such as impacting even my connectivity last week and trying to problem solve through this. The team did swiftly address them. So this helps us also in times of disaster of having this, this resilience in place with our technology systems. I'm also thrilled to share that the county has published its first popular annual financial report. This was a goal that I set out for finance two years ago, and with all the other opportunities that have emerged, I actually forgot about this challenge, because we had other new opportunities. And lo and behold, the team pulled it through this year, so just really expressing appreciation for that. And so what is the importance of the PAFR? The PAFR brings to storytelling really the complexities of the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which, if you have a finance background, it is probably more interesting and understandable to read. But how our, how our finances are managed and how they are used is incredibly important from a taxpayer transparency. And so the Popular Annual Financial Report really brings that to life. I also want to just mention, in your board statement, it was indicated that we have, that I've entered into a contract with a consultant to help us work through the next five weeks of ensuring that we meet federal compliance for our federal grants and contracts. That contractor is Espazo Strategies, led by Janelle Bell, the C E O. For just context, Janelle had actually helped the county draft the county's equity resolution. Janelle is working with other entities in the region navigating this complexity of time. I just really appreciate Espazo coming forward so quickly and their continued partnership with the county. For context, Espazo has worked on other county initiatives. We do have a standing contract with Espazo for additional communications capacity. They've also worked with many departments, including L U T, on transportation planning and incorporation of equity, equity lens into transportation. So more to come. We are rapidly working on that scope of work, and we'll be sharing that in upcoming leadership updates and making sure that information is also publicly available. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Over to you, Alex.
Commissioners, one substantive update for you today. I think your board is aware that Oregon Health Authority has elected to extend our county financial assistance agreements for community mental health through thirty-one December of this year. So it doesn't solve the ultimate issue, but it does give us a little more room. So it doesn't solve the ultimate issue, but it does give us a little more room to work with the state and with other counties on that issue. And then I'm just on a person, I'm sorry.
Doesn't that also include the, the statement about consistent with previous funding levels?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that that's the important statement.
Yes, yeah. And then just on a personal note, I think I've had the chance to meet with each of you at this point. So I really appreciate as part of my onboarding process, you taking the time out of your schedules to sit down with me and week three, but who's counting? I'm looking forward to working with you for a long time. Thank you.
Been an easy.
Who is your favorite, Alex?
Who's meeting?
The fifth on that.
Who's meeting? Do you enjoy the?
All five. That's a good answer.
All five.
Boy, Commissioner Phi, you're on thin ice. All right. With that, let's go to board member updates. Who would like to go first?
Mine's easy.
Okay.
Because we had Juneteenth Thursday, so we had that off Friday. I was supposed to take my grants on fishing, but weather. 86 that, so I moved that to the 30th, so it'll be a week from Monday. I'll be doing that. I had Commissioner Teresa and I went to Congresswoman Bonamice's meet and greet for the pre-meeting there and with a few other electives around town. It's always good to chat with her kind of to get the personal insights of what she's going through and what the federal government's going through. I will be tomorrow, I will be at Metro President's State of the Region address at the Oregon Zoo. I don't know who else amongst you are going to be there, but that should be should be a good meeting. I did the net. I don't have anything else. Bye there.
Thank you.
Less than a minute.
Wow. I would like to go next.
Last Wednesday, I attended the Community Action or I had a Community Action Board meeting. Continued discussions around the implications for federal contracts and funding there. No surprise, but just to report that out. I also managed to get former Mayor Truax nominated as Vice Chair of that board. So eventually he will likely become Chair. Thursday, despite it being Juneteenth, I had a meeting with the organization that is trying to build a battery stored, large battery storage project in my district outside Sherwood and Stephen. They haven't already contacted you. I think you can expect contact from them. So just a heads up there. They're working through some challenges. Friday, I met with a Walton City Councilor and then we also had the Public Safety Coordinating Council Legislative Debrief. I think that team's a little bit frustrated with some of how things went with funding in Salem during this session.
Join the long line.
Yeah. So, and that's just, just a heads up. Saturday, we had Acre Retreat. Yesterday, I met with the Tiger Chamber CEO and then also had a one-on-one with County Administrator. Today, I'm meeting actually for dinner with a one-on-one with Mr. Shanley, CWS CEO. I'm going to be at County College and hopefully graduating if I get my time in on Friday night.
You will.
So no, I, I will be graduating.
Cap and gown.
Don't think so. And I don't think, I don't think my family will be there either, but there is some sort of ceremony, I understand. Then Saturday is the Tiger Pride Parade. So wanted to mention that I'll be, be there as well. I think that's at three o'clock on Saturday.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Great. Commissioner Phi.
Next. Congratulations. My AOC county training was online, so I don't know.
You didn't get a big graduation ceremony.
Yeah. Or probably the, also the quality of the content you're learning is also probably not the same as what I got.
Probably.
Last week, well, let me start off and say tomorrow, no, Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be off. So I'm taking some time off and then back maybe Friday and then. But last week, I want to give you two things. One, I really had the opportunity to attend the Latino Cultural Festival in Hillsborough. That was so much fun and I had the opportunity to speak as well. The more, this is how much fun it was. I couldn't get my three boys to leave that event. And, and I tell you, I was running out of cash. And I refused to use my card. So I was like, we're, we're, we're coming in. We made plans to go in with some dollars and I tell you, we kept pulling that 20. It's so many good food and it was really well worth it because you know, the community members that are selling their businesses, not only is it quality and healthy stuff, it just feels good to support community members in these times. And then, you know, just so that there are no surprises, especially for me. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to participate in a press conference and I wanted you all to hear the speech I gave so that there are no surprises. There's no out of context. I think I've, I've heard some people who said, did you say this and did you say that? So this is what I said in the full context. Thank you to everyone who stood up here today. You reminded us why we are here, to stand against fear, against cruelty and to stand for humanity. I'm not speaking for Washington County as a whole. I speak today from lived experience as a mother, a refugee, a public servant and a neighbor who loves this community deeply. We're living through a moment where fear is being weaponized for clicks, for cloud and for control. Not just in Washington DC, but right here on our streets, in our schools and in our politics. That may be clear about where I stand. I stand for fairness. I stand for safety. I stand for dignity for every person who calls this place a home. I was born in Somalia, a country torn apart by civil war. My family fled not for comfort, but for survival. We crossed borders under moonlight. A refugee camp became our home and we prayed for a second chance. America and more specifically Oregon was that second chance. And I often ask myself, what if we hadn't made it? Would, would I be here raising a family, serving in public office, giving back to the very state that took us in? That question fuels how I lead because behind every debate about immigration policy is a real human story like mine. A child praying for safety, a mother hoping for stability, a family searching for home. Recently, our local law enforcement leaders stood up and affirmed a simple truth. I think this is the right version I read. We will not be supporting or assisting any immigration enforcement activities. We will not be used as tools of federal immigration enforcement. They reaffirmed Oregon's sanctuary law. They committed to building trust, not fear. That matters because when people are afraid of their own government, they stop calling the police, they stop going to the doctor, they disappear from public life and that makes us all less safe. This is not about national politics. This is about who we are right here in Washington County. And I believe this, we can protect our neighborhoods without prosecuting our neighbors. We can uphold the law without tearing apart families and we can lead with strength without losing our soul. Leadership is not about chasing the loudest voices. It's about anchoring ourselves in the deepest values. So to every immigrant, every refugee, every child watching this moment, I see you, I believe in you and I will keep standing up for you. Not because it's easy, but because it's right. Thank you. And that was my full context of my speech and it was a really great turnout and, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback. And I didn't run out of time.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. Thank you. Thank you for your report and thank you for sharing with us. Alrighty, my turn, I guess here. It's been, several things have been covered. Last, last Tuesday, I did go to Bonamice's event. Wednesday, I stopped by the CDOES All Leaders Conversation and that was, it was really good to be there. I appreciate it. And I'm hoping into the future that the commissioners will be alerted as to when those events are so we all can come. It was, it was really good. Last Friday was a really interesting day for me. I went on a boat tour. It was part of, it was arranged by RDPO and I sit on RDPO. The purpose was to tour the Critical Energy Infrastructure Hub that's along the Columbia River from like oh Fremont Bridge up to Sobeys Island where you see the big oil storage tanks. The purpose was to understand the impact of the storage there in case of a disaster. So if there were to be a, you know, a significant earthquake, that, that area would liquefy and that, that, that storage of energy would be subject to, you know, open containers and fires and that type of thing. What, what really hit home to me is that if you think about the Valdez incident that was many years ago in Alaska, they released 11, I believe it was 11 million gallons of oil. This would release 200 million gallons, all of the storage alone. So it gives you context as to how big this is. And it's a serious issue, certainly sits in Multnomah County, but it's my view that we are all partners in this region. And so as we look to the future, it's something that we should be aware of as well. So, and supporting the, our, our fellow counties and cities as they address this issue. On Saturday, we had the Acre Retreat. I want to take a minute to thank everybody that attended. It was really a, a good discussion. The, we had two guests in the room, Marcus Monday and Mary Manso. They were, they were guests, but they were also really engaged. It was, it was great to have them there. The discussion that was led by Janelle Bell was really a good discussion about how we can get through the next steps. As we talked about the coming five weeks of meetings, I want you all to know that Acre, Acre asked if they could meet weekly to participate in this process. So you're going to see month.
They were very committed.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Jason. They were, they were very committed and it was, we will commit to one meeting a week. We will commit to subcommittees, whatever it takes to get this work done. So I, I felt very positive when I left to the point where the people that were still there, we all took a group picture. We're not exactly sure where that's going to go yet, but it will be, it will be recorded. So it was, it was a, it was a hard day, but it was also a very productive day and a special shout out to Tanya for the work that you did and pulling that together and also changing your schedule to allow for that. Tanya took, I'm going to keep saying it was the red eye. She took the red eye home from San Antonio, Texas to be able to participate the next day in this. So thank you for your leadership around.
Alicia's facilitation was.
Yes, thank you.
As well in planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for that. I quickly, I also attended the Latino Cultural Festival and my speaking points were directed at the impact of small business from the Latino businesses in relationship to Washington County. And it was, it was in support of the relationship between the chamber and the county. So it was really good to be there. Lots of people, lots of fun, lots of energy. It was very, very positive. And nice to see the Hillsborough Hops open their stadium to that event. I, I also want to tell you that I talked with Chief Deputy Alro K. They're really excited about the sheriff's office is going to be spotlighted in the TV series Cops. I don't know if you watched that, but it's, they're filming right now. So that's, that's going to be a cool thing.
38th, 38th season.
Season 38. And yesterday, I, I'm making a commitment.
Commissioner Willie, the Vice Chair, leave the Vice Chair alone.
I'm not sure what my 38.
38 season, we're not going to see it.
It's third, no, it's the third and eighth season of the show. No.
Moving on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to be around for that 38th.
You're right. You're right. Okay. So yesterday I spent time at Clean Water Services Central and it was really nice to spend time in the office. I need to get a badge to be able to get in and out. That's on the way. But just being there and talking to people, I would encourage you all to take time to sit in one of the hotel offices there and work away. It's, all the connections work really well. I'm going to the Metro President's State of the Region and I'm going to be at Metro for the Impact Meeting and then I'll be at Metro for the ARWAC Meeting. And that's my report.
You hadn't screwed up the episode thing.
So with, with that, let's move on, please, to our first presentation this morning. So this is going to be on the annual audit review response and I would like to invite not interim, but our Chief Financial Officer, John Steyer, to the table along with Molly Rogers. Congratulations to you.
Takes a lot of seasons.
Never going to live.
Thank you, John.
All right. Good afternoon, board. I'm John Steyer, the Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer. Today, we get to talk about audit, very exciting topic in the actual world, hopefully for our viewers online and others in this room. But on the 23rd of May, TKW, our external auditors, Talbot, Borvola and Warwick completed our annual audit for the FY '24 budget year. And I will make note that that is not as timely as we like, not because of TKW, because of our ability to provide, to produce the ACFR, the Annual Consolidated Financial Report, which I copy here, and also the federal schedule of federal awards documents, which are needed for the auditor to audit. So, so they were completed on the 23rd of May and then on the 4th of June, our Audit Committee back and reviewed the results of the audit report. Audit Committee meets twice a year and they're very cordial. They're very engaged. They're very supportive of our staff. I really appreciate that. But today I just want to talk about what's in the audit report. And as part of that is also to kind of give you, I guess, the basics of what, what is the audit? What is the ACFR? For those that don't know, save a little education on that. And then we're going to talk about how we're going to fix some things, the findings that are in the audit report. And on the consent agenda tonight, we have consent agenda to revise what we're talking about in here, our recommendations. It's required to go to the state audit division is how we're going to fix things. So that's on the consent agenda tonight. Stop writing. We're going to talk a little overview about it and why it matters. And then we'll get into the schedule of findings and our trends, the recommendations. So what is a financial audit? It's a, it presents a fair and material, correct materially correct representation of an entity's activity and financial position through expressing an opinion. And our TKW external auditors have provided us an unmodified opinion, which I'll talk more about later, but that basically means it's a reliable and reflects, our documents are reliable and they reflect the position and performance of the organization. And why do we need that? Well, it's a requirement by law that we get audited annually. But it also provides transparency and identifies areas where we're doing well, that the areas where we might need to improve. And also verifies that our internal controls are in place and operating and helps us to perform better. Annual Consolidated Financial Report is the big document. So it's about 300 pages. It's a set of financial statements that we use to make sure that, well, we produce these in line with the GASP, so the Government Accounting Standards Board describes our spending as well as our assets and liabilities. describes our spending as well as our assets and liabilities. And it's issued by municipalities. And so that report reads the same across different government organizations that you can compare one entity to another and understand the financial position of the organization. It's basically a detailed report. Probably get into more details in the next couple of slides. So the reports that we produce are the annual consolidated financial report. About kind of what's in it. There's, there's basically four sections. So an introductory section provides an overview of the board, our organizational structure. It also has a transmittal letter for management on, on our position and things that we put in there. And then there's a section on financials, a lot of statistical data, and then independent auditors report at the end of that. And then the CIFA, so may have heard this term or or not, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. As you talked about, the federal dollars that we get each year, one hundred thirty two million dollars in FY twenty four is what we spent on federal awards. And for both of these audits for the review, we also received an unmodified opinion for our federal awards, which is good, means it reflects our condition. However, we have findings. So we had ten findings this year in the audits, and I will talk more about those in more detail on the coming slides. But I did want to talk about what, what are deficiencies from an auditor's perspective. So there's really three broad categories. You have accounting errors and misstatements, can have internal control weaknesses, or instances of noncompliance with rules and regulations. And then the two main categories there are material weakness, which we prefer not to see on audit report, or significant efficiencies. But a material weakness indicates a reasonable possibility, the material misstatement of an entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And so that's in fact, it indicates that we don't have controls in place or we need to do something better. Likewise, with a significant deficiency, it's not as important as a material weakness, but it's also important enough to bring to the board's attention and to our management's attention. That is something we need to work on. But why it matters? I think mostly matters because of public trust. We want to have public to have trust in our financials and that we're doing the right thing with their dollars. And that we take action when we know that we have a problem we have to fix. It also helps with our bond rating. So we just finished our bond rating call with the Moody's and working on our misstep bond that we're going to issue. That bond rating has can be affected by a poor audit. And also managed because internal controls, we want to fix things, we want to prevent fraud, we want to catch fraud if it's out there and identify any consistent errors. And then, of course, help us do process improvement. And then just at the top, so the plan of action, so tonight my consent agenda will be our plan of action that will go back to the Secretary of State, how we're going to fix some of those deficiencies that were noted by the audit. Just to talk briefly about the bond rating. So we currently enjoy a triple A bond rating.
Could we take a moment, just a moment here and congratulate you and the administration for, for the work that it took to go through the interview process and to receive this AAA bond rating. I think it's really important. I, I received a note from my CPA friend on the right here suggesting that I call this out, but it's, it's very true. And, and thank you very much for that work.
It's a big hats off to the management team and also your board for supporting us. We do have our final call tomorrow with them to provide the actual rating and a public announcement that we'll review.
Yeah. So we have a short turnaround period from when Moody's will issue the rating and then for a review. So please watch this week after that is final tomorrow. Then we will be issuing a press release. And I want to say, well, we're saying we have areas of improvement. I think part of our culture here at Washington County and being a learning organization and coming to you and saying, hey, we have these findings and we do have a planned approach to address these findings moving forward. And I just, I, I want to so appreciate the team because getting findings is not the easiest news for any of us to hear. That's not and I'll say myself. But when you get the bad news, you have the opportunity and responsibility to lean into that and then determine a plan moving forward. So just want to give huge kudos to the team. And also huge kudos to the transition that we've been through. And I know John and Molly will probably speak to this a bit, but we have been experiencing, my words, a desert of financial talent and expertise in this region. And so to even just manage our finances, day to day management and housing this last year, we've had to rely on Robert Half temps in order to do that. And so I'm really fortunate to new members, Sarah and Ryan, both joining the team and seeing really talent coming into Washington County. And frankly, I think that allows myself to breathe. I know John and Molly breathe, breathe a bit. So looking forward to like this build back moment and just I want your I do not, and I've already spoke to how important bond rating is. It saves us money. It saves us money. And that is incredibly, incredibly important. Not just for this hundred and fifty and misstep bonds, but as we look forward to what our future capital needs are. It is in the best interest of the taxpayers. And in my experience with bond rating calls, if they know your management practices are in place, meaning yes, you may have bad news or things go wrong, but it's how you address them and you address them swiftly. That's incredibly important.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know, John, you might want to explain a little bit about how that saves us money. But I remember the WACA bond several years ago went out at seventy five million and sold for ninety four million or something. So that's how we, because our bond rating is high enough and the interest rates are attractive. So investors pay more.
And I'm learning more about this as I go. I've never on before. So this is new to me. But the process has been very good with our consultants helping us in the process. I did review the April ninth, twenty nineteen bond rating that we received. And that biggest thing that stuck out to me there was it did highlight the importance of management and support. And so that was telling. But also going all the way back to two thousand nine, we had a double A two rating. So the rating has improved over the years.
I'd like to learn more about why then and what the changes are, but not for right now.
I would too. So I was thinking about two thousand nine was a while ago, but yeah.
So we can dive deep into it. I think you've heard me say this before. I, this is the space I kind of geek out in a bit. Yeah. No, we, we can, we can dive, dive deeper into that because it does, it does also depend on your population base, your socioeconomics. So it's not just the county as a governmental entity. It's also your community makeup. So we can, yep. So we can provide more.
You're absolutely right. So now we're digging the schedule of findings. And so really the main themes that we have are with turnover and training. I mean, those are the two things we have to get after. And we're really working on getting the right people in place. I mean, the finance, my finance team had a huge turnover, losing our, our CFO, our deputy CFO, our chief accountant, our senior accountant and our accountant to all within a period of six months. And that was after this fiscal year closed, but it's that's the time over process and trying to get the reports done. And so having that continuity is important and having the right training in place and processes is important. So we're working on that. Now, if you wanted to comment on housing.
Yeah, for the record, Molly Rogers, I'm the Director of Housing Services and the Housing Authority of Washington County. And I think we are a microcosm of perhaps some of the larger trends you have, we have all faced in central finance in terms of we've had a really wholesale change in leadership. And additionally to that, a change in our finance team and really needing to invest in our new hires and new and really about the organizational structure of how we are, how we have all grown, as we've seen in the budget that we just presented at HAWK, we've diversified in both sophistication, complexity, and many more business lines that I believe has resulted in the need for us to have additional training and subject matter expertise and how we understand those capital assets and understanding new ownership structures and new complex ways that we finance. We talk about bonds, but in, in the housing world we live in, we're not just bonds. It's also different types of conventional mortgages as well as low income housing tax credits. And each of these deals is incredibly complex. And we do utilize other auditors do that work, but we hadn't built the internal capacity and expertise as at that time to really take that work on. So I just wanted to express my complete gratitude to John and, and and Ms. Angie and, and our new hires and really looking at this from one Washington County approach. I think we're, we're in the same growth trajectory as the full county. And we are on the same trajectory to make sure that we are going to be managing for in our future together and making sure that these are addressed appropriately. In fact, we had already been making improvements underway. And I will just let you know that Brian Bonzbock is, I think, is a little bit better in compared to our council sort of seven weeks. Already making a huge difference. And we're in the middle of our controller recruitment at this, at this moment. So we'll go into a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to say that we do have action already underway and a findings here in particular for housing are, are been specific to our housing choice voucher program, our continuum of care program that we get from federal funds. And really it's, we've already been implementing new procedures and the use of checklists to ensure secondary reviews on those reports and required document retention. We'll go into detail a little bit.
I just want to talk briefly about trends and audits. So this year we had ten findings. In previous years, we had less. We had one in twenty twenty one, two in twenty twenty two, and one in twenty twenty three. So it's a bit concerning to have an awful higher number of findings this year. And so I think we're on trajectory to, to, to fix those. Many of those on the material weaknesses identified from twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, on the top, there are kind of the same issues with staffing and training. And so those are things I pledge that we're going to work on. And we are also getting tools in place. So we're going to have a new ERP system that's going to help us with that. And, and also working through looking at all of our financial policies and making sure they align with that and align with how we want to do business going forward. So the other component I would say is getting the right personnel. HR is doing a class and comp study to make sure we have the right job descriptions of the people we need to do the work and aligning those structures internally. So some of those things are in the works. And with that, we're going to shift and talk about our recommendations for each of the ten. Some of them are grouped together. And this is how we're presenting the consent agenda night, the latter that will go to the audit division's Secretary of State in the format of how we're going to fix the audit recommendations.
For the record, Ryan Bonzbock, Deputy CFO of the Department of Housing Services and Housing Authority of Washington County. This first finding is within HAWK, the Housing Authority. It is a material weakness that our auditors found in our control environment over financial reporting. We are addressing this already, like Molly and John have mentioned, through staffing, training and updated procedures. We are in the final stages of hiring a controller for the Housing Authority and DHS, filling out the rest of the management team. We have been relying on consultants to clean up our books and get us back to a point of regular month end close so that we have good financial reports that management can review. Also investing in training for our existing staff, both for government financial management as well as the things specific to our industry. So low income housing tax credits, affordable housing development. And we are working with consultants specific to affordable housing development for those real estate transactions to build that expertise in-house.
Next three, I've lumped together the findings, two, three, and four, and they're all similar recommendations, which I talked about, just getting our staffing set and policy guidance and the RP. But I'll just talk briefly. So the zero zero two was one that was just a finding that we reported reported in the wrong fiscal year. And so to me, that's a training issue. And then zero zero three was a series of, of findings. Items like reporting on capital assets, reporting grant information, doing reconciliations on a regular basis. Things like that. And so the whole series of things that we're looking at as far as training needs.
So the zero zero two, just to be clear, that those were transactions that were accurate but recorded in the wrong year?
Yes, correct, yes. And then on zero zero four, that, that is because the, the audit was late. And so that was a finding. We have ideally to get our financial reports done by December and then have them reported earlier. We haven't been on time for years. That's one of my goals also is to get our reports done on time.
This next grouping is all within the Housing Authority and it relates to the voucher programs. So all kind of under the umbrella of vouchers. What the findings have in common are really the need to have secondary review, other than the staff preparing the report, the submission that we make to HUD or a rent reasonableness determination. And we're addressing it by have already implemented different workflows and protocols to make sure that those checks are built into the workflow prior to submitting to the report to HUD. We're also using a third party rent reasonableness system to make that determination prior to voucher issuance or tenant move in. So it was a number of different findings that have a commonality around making sure that we're double checking our work and having that bifurcation of duties so that somebody is preparing, somebody is reviewing prior to submission.
Is that creating a significantly, like it impacting the amount of time it's taking to process each of these or not?
It's not. I think a lot of the, the reasons related to staff turnover and the need to have policies more clearly documented. So I think prior people were in most cases doing that extra review. It's just that during the course of the audit, we might have ten thousand transactions, they sample twenty five and find an error or an omission in one or two of those. And so this was really just making sure the workflows are more clearly understood department wide.
Thank you.
I guess just to comment follow on on that is when we talk about internal control deficiencies. The first question then, so do we have any misappropriations, mishandling of funds or vouchers or those kinds of things? It sounds like we did not. We just needed to kind of get in there. And as you said, John, had some staffing, do some better training. And so that was what I was reading into this, that we had dodged that bullet. So that's good.
That's correct, Commissioner. I do want to emphasize that bigger point, and that was really important. There's been no identification of fraud, misuse of funds, anyone who is ineligible got into housing. It's more of a checks and balance. Do we have an additional signatory on each of these, on, on every single person who moved into housing? So it, it's just making sure, back to that definition of what that weakness really is around the, it's more of a we catch something that could have happened in, in the timely amount of time. And so, yes.
I just want to underscore that point. In the entire audit, there are no signs of fraud.
Thank you.
There are no signs of fraud. The purpose of internal controls, policies and trainings is those are the tools that help prevent fraud. And so that's yep. And so that's where, why the auditors lift these types of fraud. And so that's where, why the auditors lift these types of, these types of findings up. So you can compare it to kind of preventative maintenance for facilities.
So the secondary review is really essential.
This next finding was related to required inspections for public housing units. So we, we agree with the findings the auditors identified during the period that this audit took place. We were in the process of expanding the team of inspectors that we had to keep up with the increased number of units. We also were kind of on the backside of the pandemic where we had a backlog of units to be inspected that were delayed while the pandemic was going on. And we put new processes in place to make sure that we are proactively identifying the units that are coming up on that 24 month inspection window. So that before we, we get to their absolute due date, we've identified those and know that we can deploy our inspectors to prioritize those housing units. And this last one is also housing. This is part of the continuum of care program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. There's a 25% match requirement in for those funds for administering the program. In this case, we did budget and allocate for that 25%. What we don't have is the document retention to show that we reviewed during the course of the fiscal year to match the expenditures alongside the matching requirement. So we budgeted for it, we planned for it. We just don't have the documented review that we matched the expenditures up throughout the implementation during the fiscal year. And we have a new process in place to make sure that we do review throughout the fiscal year and match those expenditures up to make sure that we are meeting the 25% matching requirement.
All right, break us to the overview and discussion. Really, it's a marathon. We're not a sprint. Need to fix, we need to fix things and make them well. And it takes time to hire people, it takes time to train people, takes time to write policies. But we're committed to doing all those things as we go forward. Open up for discussion or or guidance from the board.
Are there questions? We've got several of them along the way. Thank you for.
And I got to during, as a member of the audit committee, so well, no, I'm saying I've, I've already.
Yes, you've had your.
More than one bite at the apple.
Mr. Willie, do you have a question?
I just know, I was just going to make the comment that this is great when you read something like this. Initially, you have all kinds of things of concern, but you, you've addressed him. I read your report here, John and Molly, and so this is great. So I appreciate the fact that we have taken aggressive approach to cleaning up this because this is very important. It seemed to me that in your position, one of the top priorities was making sure you hit your deadlines. And it's pretty doggone important that this not be late. And so I'm glad to hear that's a priority going on because we've got to do that.
I have a question. First of all, thank you. And I've read this report thoroughly. It's really interesting. What is the, what's the employee response when there are material and significant findings identified? I, I'm curious, you know, how, how as a manager do you deal with that? Because I'm certain there's a response.
I can speak for the Housing Authority. Thank you for the question. It's really hard on them. And so I think the really important thing that we can do is coach through them that it's a learning opportunity. We are going to make steps to improve our situation and avoid it into the future. And that we have really strong support in order to do that from, from the board, from our executive leadership. So it is, it is difficult, right? They're a group of accountants. They like, they like to be, they like to be correct. And and they've been through really difficult transitions. And so making sure that the frontline employees aren't taking that as a personal failure has been really important.
Commissioner Willie, back to your question and comment a moment ago. This was discussed a little bit about at the audit committee. And I think it's important context to know that we are not likely to be able to just make everything perfect in your sort of next year, in part because there's staff turnover that has happened and that is getting up to speed.
We're already there at 25.
But, but also the, the ERP implementation is going to like, I just don't want you to expect next year to be like just completely.
Perfect?
Yes. I mean, even on the timing, like on the timing.
I completely get that. And that's a good point, Jason. Thank you for that. And I was pleased to hear that the ERP system that is going to help enhance the accuracy and the efficiency certainly of your department as well as a lot of others. So it's always good to hear that too. So thanks for pointing that out.
And, and I'd like to go back to my question earlier about the employees because I think it's really important that as commissioners, we, we understand what the situations are that the employees are in, the fact that they've, we've had there are barriers and it's very difficult to, to work when there are barriers there. But I think you're hearing from all of us, the commitment to make sure that those barriers are removed through the big opportunities like ERP, but also just through the personnel process and the recognition that it's important to have your, your policies and your people in place to be able to do the job effectively. And that I, I'm speaking for myself a bit here, but I just don't, I don't want this to be something negative for employees to absorb. But as you mentioned, an opportunity to learn and do things differently. I, we certainly, thank you for everybody here, but we certainly see that.
So if I can just add to that. So thank you for bringing the employee experience up. Because many times we have staff groups that really don't want their work in, in the public eye. And our finance teams are generally front and center of those groups. And from a leadership perspective, it is very important that we openly share where we're at and what is our roadmap to fix this. I'm going to shift to from a governance perspective and your board fiduciary responsibility is a key role your board has. So while some of you don't have a finance background, making sure that we have strong financial position is a core function of your role. So I just, please make sure you hold us accountable to this plan too, because that is part of your governance responsibility. And thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for saying we will be, we're moving the ball forward and this won't all be fixed in one year. And that's where our new CFO was speaking to, it's a marathon, not a sprint.
Thank you. Or anything else that you need from us?
Support, thank you. We really, we really appreciate the support that you provided.
Absolutely. Please extend the appreciation to the entire staff. Alrighty. With that, we are headed into a break. We are scheduled to reconvene at 3:15, which is right, we're late already. But would you like to take five, 10 minutes before we go into executive session? Is 3:30 okay? Okay. Yes?
So it is so since we're going to executive, if you want to make a motion to go in the executives, then we can.
Yes, I'd like to get a motion, please, to go into an executive session or S 192.6600 sub two sub D.
I move that.
Second. All those in favor? See you back here at 3:30. Thank you, Kevin.
No reflection on current leadership, that we're already five minutes behind.
I know.